Alrighty, internet is super fast tonight. Our YouTube feed is live, our webinar is live. Mr. Casa, the meeting is yours.
I will try to keep up that, uh, that speed, but just as thorough. Thank you, Mr. Gelmer. This calls to order our November 2025 Safe Schools Committee. And with that, as always, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, with that, we'll now move to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the approval of the minutes for October 27th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, and are there any comments or questions?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or raise your hands. I'm out of practice somehow. Uh, motion passes unanimously. I see that we have no action items, but we have two informational items this evening. And with that, Mr. Rohn, if you could start off this evening's informational session, we appreciate that.
Sure, appreciate the opportunity and good evening, North Penn community. It gives me great pleasure to bring Dr. Nicholson's final North Penn Discipline Report for the Safe Schools Meeting and for the first marking period of the 25-26 school year. So, Dr. Nicholson, the floor is now yours.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Rohn. I appreciate it. I appreciate the option or the opportunity, I should say, to present this evening. So, good evening, Board of Directors, and good evening to the, uh, the folks from the community that may be tuning in this evening. So, as we have in the past, it's my pleasure this evening to present our discipline year-to-date. When I say year-to-date, that is through the end of the first marking period, which this year was on November 5th, which was just a few days after our, uh, our Safe Schools Committee meeting in October. So this data is just a few weeks old. And before I begin, I just want to, you know, share with everybody, if you haven't been paying attention, we have made it a practice to share discipline data each, after each of the marking periods. This year is a bit different. We've been working very hard, Mr. McKenna, myself, Mr. Rohn, Dr. Bauer, and our technology department to really align different codes and to make sure that we have, um, PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, available at all of our schools, both elementary and secondary at the middle level. That caused what you will see as we move forward here a bit, some changing of some codes, some creation of some new codes. So we've tried to align the discipline data that I'm about to share as best we can to, to kind of make sure we're more apples-to-apples rather than apples-to-oranges from the previous years and the data we've shared there. There will be some discrepancies, which I'll talk a little bit about as I move through here. The second thing I really want to share with you and just remind the folks that are listening, maybe for the very first time, there are three definitions that I just want to make sure everybody's aware of. And you'll see this as a thread throughout all of the data I'll, I'll share. Number one is unique students. So that's the number of unduplicated students that have any kind of infraction or any kind of suspension or detention. So for instance, if there were 20 students that were suspended for cutting class, but I was suspended five times, I would only count as once. Okay, so even if I was suspended five times, a unique student is, is each individual student. So there could be students, there could be situations where you see there were 20 suspensions, but only 15 students were suspended, and that would account for me potentially being suspended five different times for that same offense. Percentage of population is simply just that, the number of unduplicated students divided by the total number of students enrolled. So what percentage of the population has received a detention, has received an in-school or out-of-suspension particular, particular behavior? And then finally, number of suspensions is the number of suspensions or detentions. That includes the repeat offender. So again, if we go back to the example, if I cut class and was suspended five times, I would count as one unique student, but five separate suspensions. So again, just explaining some of the discrepancies we see in some of the numbers in the data. With that, I will roll in and we'll start with just the year-to-date total of where we are. Happy to report that so far this school year, the 25-26 school year, our detentions are much lower than they were last school year in 24-25. You'll see that that number has dipped from 1,227 detentions to 1,018 detentions. The total percentage of the population, 3.9% of our students, received detentions within the first marking period last year, 3.6% of our students this year. We attribute a lot of that, most of that, to a settling in of the cell phone policy. So many of you may remember that last year, actually I should say the summer prior to last year, we made some sweeping changes to our electronic device policy, really ensuring that we brought students into a more engaged state, less engaged in their personal devices in class, more engaged in the classroom, and we did see a huge uptake in detentions because of that. I think what we've seen as last year drew on is that students got used to that. The enforcement of that was very, very consistent across all of our schools, and the numbers of detentions dropped throughout the year, and we've seen that trend this year. When we look at in-school suspensions and out-of-school suspensions, as a total, it's pretty much a flat trend. They're, uh, were very, very similar to what we had last year, in both in-school suspensions, were five less than we were last year, and were four more in out-of-school suspensions this year versus less. As we dive into what is accounting for those, we'll start with the academic infractions. There are also code of conduct infractions, which will be next. But out-of-school suspensions here, I think what we'll see as we move through most of the data are shifts, more so than changes or drastic swings in the number of out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, detentions, but more shifting. And some of that is, as I mentioned, due to some of the different codes that have been created and some of the different, just changes in the way data is reporting this year. So specifically, what you'll see is last year, continued violation of school rules, there were 12. Most of those have rolled up into student code of conduct violations. So you'll see that number is 28 versus 18, but the continued violation of school rules has gone from 12 to zero. That is something that we have, uh, that we're no longer reporting on. So again, you'll see out-of-school suspensions for these specific academic infractions, very, pretty much flat, from 35 out-of-school suspensions, 0.25% of our, our student body, to 39 out-of-school suspensions, or 0.24% of our student body. When you look at in-school suspensions, again, you'll see, uh, pretty much a shift because the numbers are pretty much right on, 98 and 98. Again, you'll see cutting class is a, a thread that I'll talk a bit, a bit more about as we move through here. Cutting class has increased. I'm going from 29 individual students that were in-school suspended for this last year to 57 during this school year. So you can see, and we'll see in subsequent slides, there's a trend in increase in class cuts, which we'll, we'll be diving into over the, the coming weeks and months with our, our discipline teams. I should go back here real quick. I will say that the student code of conduct violation, as per always, I do have a slide on, on what those individual situations are later on in the slideshow. When we look at out-of-school suspensions, what we'll see again is, is a dramatic shift. Previous years, three physical aggressions, one physical aggression, 12 last year, 46 this year. We attribute this again to the shift to the different coding. Last year, Montgomery Elementary and Pembroke Middle School were highlighting the PBIS codes in Infinite Campus. They were using those codes, where realistically, the rest of the district was using at the elementary level Swiss, and at the secondary level, the other two middle schools and the high school were using Infinite Campus. This year, all 18 of our buildings are using Infinite Campus. Everything is being put into the system, and we made a very concerted effort over the summer and going into this year to really focus with our principals. I know Dr. McKenna has done this. I've certainly done this with the secondary principals, of really ensuring that we are consistent across the levels, assistent across the schools in coding situations that happen with students. So what constitutes a fight at one school is also a fight at another school. What might be more physical aggression doesn't really lead to that level, but maybe a pushing match or a shoving match, not necessarily a fight as you would consider, you know, two students swinging punches at each other, but really consistency across the buildings to ensure that we're, we're showing, again, apples-to-apples here moving forward. Again, as you can see, out-of-school suspensions for these other infractions are completely flat. We went from 121 suspensions in the 24-25 year to 121 suspensions during this school year, from 0.8% of our population to 0.77. So very, very negligible there.
And Dr. Nicholson, I just want to make sure with clarity, this is apples-to-apples in terms of timeframe that you're reporting on. So it's not all of the prior year and then just a quarter. This is quarter-to-quarter, correct?
Correct. That is quarter-to-quarter as of November 5th. So the, the marking period may have changed at a bit of a different date last year, just based on when holidays fell, but this was beginning of school year through November 5th, which was the end of the first marking period this year. So yes, absolutely, apples-to-apples. This is not, you know, four times what it was last year because the 24-25 and subsequent, and prior years are, are the entire year. This is the same timeframe, roughly the first 45 days of school.
Dr. Nicholson, if I could just, if you could go back to that last slide real quick. I just want to point out, just because we've had some public comment lately about some of the state-level data, and I just want to reemphasize some of the things that you said. This has been about streamlining and making more consistent. So if you look at some of these offenses in the left-hand column, I will use aggravated, uh, simple assault on staff. In years past, we're going back now three, four years, it, it is possible that someone chose a code that was not really technically a simple assault on staff, and the checks and balances weren't necessarily in place. And this is what we've worked really hard to clean up. So you could have a, a teacher in class select the incident type and say, "simple assault on staff." Well, it's not a simple assault unless the student is actually charged with simple assault, because then it's, it obviously lines up with a police code. So you might have someone throw a pencil in the classroom and it hits another student. So it's about like being consistent in what we're reporting. So, Mr. Nicholson did a really good job of pointing out the fact that we've been trying to streamline, try to get everybody on the same system. So there are some, some evolution in the data that you're seeing here over the years that we're, I think, what you're seeing now, Mr. Casa and committee folks, is a clear picture.
Yeah, and thank you because, and I think this is a worthwhile digression because it's staying within this conversation. I see Ms. Rudnick has, has a question. And I just want to thank the administration because it might have even been during your assistant superintendent time, Dr. Bauer, that we discussed the, the importance of developing that practice of the spot check, so to speak. And that's something I hope continues to be codified in protocol and that we're able to check for blind spots in the process. So thank you. Ms. Rudnick?
Yeah, thank you for this, Dr. Nicholson. I appreciate the fact that the time and effort has gone into aligning and, um, aligning across the, the schools and with administrations across the schools. So I have maybe one comment and one just clarification question. My clarification question is, you know, bullying has, is something that we hear a lot about. So I'm surprised that we have no counts for bullying, because we, we hear a lot about that. And just, I'm curious, has that then just gone also in one of, is it allowed, like disorderly conduct, or, or, you know, to we truly have no instances of bullying, which would be a surprise to me across the board?
If I can answer that question. So this is just one instance on one slide. There, there is a subsequent slide that's, that's not out-of-school suspension. So for this year, there have been no suspensions, out-of-school suspensions for bullying. Yeah, so there have been some shifts, and I think what you said is correct. In some cases, there could be that, you know, a situation where it's severe enough that we call the, the police in, and they determine that it's harassment. You know, it's risen to a level where it is a criminal code violation and it becomes coded as harassment. And then there are other situations, as we'll see, you know, where it may be that early in the school year, we start with something more of an in-school suspension or even a detention for something that's on the more minor side of that bullying. Not that bullying is minor, but there is progressive discipline when these things come about as well. So it's a good question.
You, you had me at the first sentence. I, I totally lost the fact that it was suspension-specific, so that's good. My second sort of comment is more general than, I, I will let us go through the other slides is, you know, the effort that was done over the last few months to ensure that there's a consistent understanding. Will that, is there a plan therefore to ensure that we do that at some set frequency so that the goalpost doesn't shift over time and we keep coming back to the same understanding?
Yeah, I mean, to, to answer that question, I'll rely maybe more on Mr. Rohn and Dr. Bauer. Obviously, Dr. McKenna and myself, along with Mr. Rohn specifically, have done a lot of that work. We've worked with the principals. We've worked in, in our elementary and secondary principal meetings as well as our instructional admins to really align those things. So, you know, the goal is to, that it's not a, a one-time situation, but it's an ongoing, ongoing training, ongoing interator reliability to make sure we, we have those where we need them to be. And, you know, I'm sure whoever is sitting in, in Dr. McKenna's seat, whoever's sitting in my seat, will be meeting with Mr. Rohn, meeting with Dr. Bauer on a bi-weekly basis, just as we have for the last three years, and make sure that, you know, we're, we're not, you know, missing that moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. I may come back to that point, but I'll keep us moving. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, I'm going to jump to the in-school suspension, and you will see Mrs. Rudnick here. There is one instance of bullying here, so it's, it's not that it's non-existent. Again, there could be some shifts, and you'll see that there are shifts within the in-school suspension. So overall, I'm happy to say our numbers are down five for this school year, from 66 to 61. You can see again that the physical aggression is, has increased. There are others that have decreased. Threats are down this year as far as in-school suspensions go. You'll also see that some of the racial ethnic intimidation is down a bit. So again, overall trend, I would say what we've seen is some shifts in some of the behaviors. There's not dramatic increases, not dramatic decreases, but there have been some shifts in how things have been coded and shifts in what we're seeing from students, which I think we see on, on a daily basis or a yearly basis. When we look at detentions, what you'll see here again, some more shifts, but a dramatic decrease. The, the largest clearly on that third line is inappropriate use of electronic devices, which was at 286 last year. Almost all of the drop is accounted for in that drop to 76 this year, which is a reduction of about 210, which again, counts for just about everything here. So I'll, I'll mention again, the, the class cutting. We have seen an increase here, and that's across the boards, out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, and detention. There's certainly something that we're talking with the principals about, that we're working with security in our secondary buildings on, is where are these students going? Why are they not in class? Working with, you know, our, our folks to make sure that we're understanding the behavior, why it's happening, so we can address it. And I know, Mr. Casa, you'll ask the question. I will speak to a little bit about the way that things are coded now, that we've switched everything to Infinite Campus and some of the granularity there, so we can run reports on when this is happening, what periods these things are happening, and do a better job of policing when we know that, you know, let's say, fourth period, class cuts are higher than any other period. Why is that happening? And where are students during that time? So I'll get into that in a little bit. So the code of conduct and continued violations, this is a, a carryover from last year. It's been the will of the board to, to kind of see what these violations are. It's pretty nebulous. So I do my best job on a quarterly basis to take those descriptions that are in each of the behavior referrals and throw them into a bucket of what could this look like, or, or maybe what is this? I've used the example in the past, as to why we use this. There are situations that happen every day. They're suspension-worthy. For the most part, the student does something. It is certainly not the behavior we're expecting from them. It is certainly not the behavior we want from our students, but it doesn't match a suspendable offense that the state of Pennsylvania says is suspendable. Unfortunately, for the, the benefit of the committee this time around, there is no fart spray example from this school year. Hopefully, there will be before the end of this school year. Somebody else can report on that. But for instance, if, it was always a great example. A student set off fart spray in the classroom, the entire class has to be evacuated from the classroom, facilities has to come in, set up fans, clear the air, do all those things before classes can be moved back in. Clearly, that's something that's suspendable for the student, but that's not something that you can necessarily put in a nice tidy bucket that state reportable to Pennsylvania. So I do my best to put these in here. Minor altercation, really, in this, in these terms, what I saw in this data does not rise to physical aggression, but it's something that certainly should not happen. It might be a student that, that's, you know, shoves a student, but it doesn't come to the, the fact where multiple students need to be spoken to. But, you know, a student does something they shouldn't. Again, does not necessarily warrant a police referral. Maybe in certain circumstances, youth aid panel worthy, which I'll talk about on the next slide. But these are the best ways that I could quantify what are, in many ways, a qualitative type of, of feeling on what these situations are. With that, I'll move on, as I mentioned, to the youth aid panel, this year's numbers. So far, as you all know, we have started the middle school youth aid panels. I'm sorry, I've broken it down. It used to be broken down by 10th, 11th, and 12th grade when we were only at North Penn High School. And this year, we've introduced, and really at the end of last year, we introduced it at the middle level as well. So far this year, we've had 12 students, seven through 12, that have gone through the youth aid panel. There have been 12 hearings completed, four programs completed successfully. There are six in progress, and two students unfortunately did not make it through the youth aid panel. So as a reminder to members of the board and to the public, youth aid panel is, excuse me, a community service that we have been able to bring into North Penn. It started at the high school, and this is for students that are first-time offenders. You can see the offenses listed there next to or under the pie chart. They're first-time offenders that really want to take responsibility for their actions. This is not to be adjudicated whether they were guilty or not. It's a student saying, you know, I'll use the first example there, THC vape. You know, that, we've had three of those so far. You know, a student is found to have a vape with marijuana in it, with THC in it, and they say, "Yeah, you know what? I'm guilty. I had it on me. I shouldn't have done so." But instead of being referred to the police, instead of being suspended from school for, you know, five days and, and all of those negative consequences that come with that, they want to take responsibility for their actions. So they meet with a panel of trained teachers, trained staff in their buildings, and there is a, a restorative piece that's put in, and there's maybe some community service, or there's some, excuse me, there may be some research that the student needs to do on the, the dangers of vaping and THC and so forth and so on. And they need to move through that entire process. There may be, there may be some counseling that they need to go to about their, their drug use or what have you. So they go through that entire process, and if they successfully complete that, they're not referred to the police. And then that, if they are suspended from school, their suspension is reduced. It's not the full term. So it's a good way for first-time offenders to, excuse me, to not have a, a police contact, to not be suspended from school. You know, if a student is in 11th grade, it's a bad example because we don't have anybody referred yet. But that 12th grader there, they've completed the program. It was their first offense, right? So instead of calling the police in for that 17, 18-year-old for that, maybe that THC vape or possession of a nicotine vape, they were able to move through a diversionary program like many adults see for a first-time offense and not have, for, for lack of a better term, not have a criminal record or maybe even a suspension on their school record. So it's been very, very successful. We're very proud of the program we have. I'm very proud to, to have our middle schools launch this year and fully up and running at all three buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Nicholson. Dr. Bauer?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, agree again with everything that Dr. Nicholson said. I just think it's important to note that he, he mentioned in lieu of us contacting the police, we have an MOU with the police departments that we can handle this ourselves. So the types of offenses we agreed upon, so we might have contacted, let's say, the town and township police, and they would send it to the county for them to go through their YAP program. We now have trained professionals to run our own. So I'm not sure the outcome is different, but we are able to run it ourselves with, you know, that MOU.
And, and that's, that, as we've discussed before, and when this was considered for the board, comes down to that efficiency and effectiveness to not burden the juvenile justice system with cases that typically wouldn't have. And yet, this is done in conjunction with and the support of the Montgomery County DA's office. So with that connection to juvenile court. And those discussions, just in case anyone tries to mischaracterize or misrepresent the truth, because that never happens, I just want to make sure that it, it's clear that MOU was discussed in, in our school board meetings through the SSC, this committee. And it's very clear what's been established, that that's in line with county, state standards, expectations, and the law. So this isn't a way to hide or minimize what has happened. It's actually about accountability, but making sure, because these are youth, that they have an opportunity to still move forward without this, without this on the record, or to the point that Dr. Nicholson made, a reducing a suspension because there's an effort. And this is done, of course, fully informed with family consent. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Bauer and Mr. Casa, I appreciate the, you know, going into a little bit more clarification there. That was, that was excellent. Thank you. All right, so summary and takeaways from the first marking period. I didn't mention this before, but students continue to be fully integrated into our CERT team meetings. So our CERT teams are response teams that respond to emergencies in all of our buildings. They also meet regularly to discuss situations that happen in the building, plan drills, and look to combat some of the discipline and some of the, the incidents that are happening in our building. So we, we began about a year ago instituting students, actually maybe a year and a half ago, instituting students into that, hearing from them, hearing where they feel, you know, maybe unsafe or less than be with the, the way things are situated in their schools, and really hearing from them at certain times of those, those meetings. I mentioned a lot about the Infinite Campus and Swiss integration. It was pilot-led last year at Montgomery-Pembroke. We are district-wide now, all 13 elementaries, all three middle schools, North Bridge and the high school, are all using the same codes. They're all using Infinite Campus. Again, so as we move forward, we're assuring that we're, we're really in line as a district with everything that's happening. I mentioned before, it includes greater granularity. Our tech department has worked tirelessly to really in, increase the reportability features of Infinite Campus, so we can drill down on what's happening and when it's happening. So as I mentioned before, our teams can sit and they can look at, okay, class cuts are a challenge. We've seen increased class cuts each one of the last couple of years. When are these happening? Maybe what types of classes are these happening in? You know, in my building, what can we do? What can we look at? You know, what times of day are these happening? So we can really respond to them in, I can't say proactive way, but in a, a much more quickly than we have in the past. So we're really proud of that work. We'll continue to refine that moving forward. I mentioned the coding changes. Infraction codes from last year have been realigned where we can. We, and I said, we, we have moved full integration and it's infractions for all the schools. So for instance, that physical aggression major, I think we saw a number 29 last year versus 83 this year. I think we can look at both the fact that there are 12 additional elementary, two additional middle schools that are all on board with the same coding, and we've worked very hard to align and to really make sure that everything is, is apples-to-apples across the district. I think that's why we're seeing those shifts. Detentions are down by 17% overall, and I think that number is, is incorrect. They're 320 versus 319. So I'll correct that before I post it, but detentions are down 17%. ISS for cutting class is an area to explore. Again, you know, why are, why are cutting classes? Why is that up 40% from last year after being up last year as compared to the previous year? The cell phone policy changes, as I mentioned, our detention numbers for electronic device use were way up last year. We're now down 73% this year. The, the reports that we've had, the teachers I've spoken with, the students we've spoken with have said, you know, realistically, cell phones are not seen in classes. It's a much more beneficial atmosphere in the classrooms last year and this year, and students are getting used to it. Many of our students have now been in the second year of that, or even the fourth or fifth year of not having cell phones. Threats of all types of decreases school year, I didn't mention much on this. We had talked a little bit about last year. There were some rough situations elsewhere in the country, and we saw an uptick in threats being reported, which you can make a, a case that an increase in threats is a good thing that we're hearing about them, right? We're doing something about them. We have been fully ingrained in behavioral threat assessment training, and that continues to take place, making sure that our, our school teams are trained in not just Level 1, Level 2, but now Level 3 behavioral threat assessment, and that we're making sure we're updating teams as, as folks retire, as folks move on or move to different buildings, ensuring that all of our behavioral threat assessment teams are up and running and, and consistent across every building. And lastly, as I said, YAP is fully implemented. It's up and running in all three middle schools as, as it has been at the high school, and we're very proud of where that's gone and where we are with that as of now. So with that, I'm going to pull my screen down because I can't see anybody with my screen being presented and see if there are any further questions.
Oh, do I have to raise my hand? I'll raise my hand. So Dr. Nicholson, again, love this, very thorough. Can't wait to be able to dig a little bit more into the data. My recommendation, or maybe it's a question, is do we have principles outlined that can be referred to? Again, this is to my comment before about how do we ensure that the goalpost doesn't change over time with respect to definitions? And then we're no, we're again going through this exercise three years from now because we, we, you know, we've been deviating from the understanding with you and Dr. McKenna going on to, I'm sure what will be, you know, great experiences for you and we will miss you. Do we have written down though, some principles that people can come back to, to help them get realigned?
Okay, I see Dr. McKenna raises his hand first. I'll let him chime in. Mr. Roon is next, and then I can add if there's anything necessary.
Sure, I'll start. Well, we, we did work very hard with our admin tech team this summer and leading up to this school year to ensure that all the codes, one, we streamlined all of those codes to make sure there's the consistency across elementary and secondary. But we also defined those codes. So there's definitions for each code. That was actually something we needed to do anyway, in the fact that making sure that when teachers and administrators enter those discipline referrals, that they're entering the right code. So we defined those, we ensured that we reviewed that, especially with our administrators this summer. And also we spent a lot of time providing training, developing training materials for staff as well to ensure some consistent implementation for the start of this school year across all of the buildings. So there's definitely consistency there. Also, as Dr. Nicholson mentioned, we have been working with our admin tech team on drilling down and running those reports as well. We can run, you know, we can gather data on individual students, of course, but by time, location, day of the week. You can look at grade level data, you can look at building level discipline data, all that data is available to analyze and look for trends in our buildings as well. So that's all the work we've been doing and using one consistent system. Infinite Campus has really been beneficial this year.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think this definition may have answered my question, the fact that you went and defined all the different categories. All right. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Roon, did you have any, any comment?
Nope. Dr. McKenna took care of it.
And I certainly would ask our, our students with any questions or insights. You may think maybe that it's not a good question, but I guarantee it is, especially if it's coming from our student reps. So please, at any time, raise your hand or jump right in. I just have a, a few questions, especially as some of us are, are heading to different horizons. I want to thank everyone in the administration, especially Dr. McKenna, Dr. Nicholson, but everyone that's here and, and continues to support this committee for their work. I, I want to make sure, I'll get in the weeds and then back out of there. Swiss, could someone define that please for the board and, and others in the audience?
Yeah, I wish I knew the, the letters, but I couldn't pull it out. But Swiss is the, the data, discipline data tracking system that really all schools who are implementing PBIS utilize for their data, for their discipline referrals. We had been using that. We really partnered with the intermediate unit. A lot of the school districts who implement PBIS use the Swiss data reporting system. So that's what our elementary teachers and staff were used to using. And actually a lot of the components of Swiss, we, we took that and moved that to Infinite Campus. All the, really the beneficial and positive components of Swiss, including the data tracking and be able to analyze and look for trends. In addition to the reporting mechanisms that Swiss had, were a lot of the things we, we worked with our admin tech team to add to the Infinite Campus Discipline Referral System. So as Dr. Nicholson mentioned, Montgomery Elementary piloted Infinite Campus last year, but 12 of our 13 elementary schools moved from Swiss to Infinite Campus this year. So definitely heavy lift, but it's definitely been very successful to start the school year.
Yeah, really innovative. Thank you. Dr. Bauer?
I was just gonna chime in with the acronym, like anything else. Swiss is spelled like Swiss cheese with only one S on the end and it's Schoolwide Information System. So.
Given me another term, I want to come up with that. So, okay, obvious though. Thank you. And, and I, I want to just ask a few questions, just so we understand where, where this information is heading. This has been seven years of development and some major leaps in this last year. Because the administration and, and leadership and staff, we're no longer just getting that low hanging fruit, but starting to climb higher up that data tree, so to speak. And all this relates to school safety and climate. So that our students have that best opportunity to excel. One of the, the areas with Infinite Campus, so that's a national platform. Are we the only ones doing this? Cause it sounds like it, that have, have developed this type of innovation and adding Swiss and now location?
So I, I would say we have partnered with Infinite Campus on a number of aspects and how it ties to the Behavioral Threat Assessment Form and the tracking within Infinite Campus. So I'm not sure if other districts are utilizing the technology, but I am confident in saying that we have challenged Infinite Campus to do more, more, more along the way. And I'm hopeful that it is benefiting other school districts as well throughout. So. And I'm sure there have been additions to the platform from other school districts that have helped us. But in this case, these specific things that Dr. Nicholson is speaking to, we have definitely asked for these features to be added and Infinite Campus has done so.
And, and that's, you know, where I'm headed next. This is all an effort for consistency, the clarity, Dr. Nicholson, thank you for explaining that. Location really helps now and this ability to not just churn data once a year when it's stale. But there, there needs to be that bravery that I'm sure will, it will continue with this committee's oversight and the administration to collect, report and evaluate. And it's this ability to look at it on a quarterly basis, not just annually. That, that really helps with efficiency, but also accuracy in how we allocate resources that are very limited. And right, we've said from the beginning, what, what is measured matters and what, right, what matters is measured. I'm wondering how this stacks up to most districts in the region or statewide. When it comes down to that annual report, is it a lot more basic and bigger buckets? Or does it loosely align or not at all? And this is next level. Just your opinion, Dr. Bauer. We'll put it in stone.
Yeah, I definitely think, Mr. Roon, you may want to chime in on this one, but I do think this is a higher level of detail and granularity. Then, oh, sorry for the dog sparking. Higher level of granularity and specificity compared to what is submitted to the state and what you can find on the leadership.
Yeah, Dr. Bauer, I will second that. It, it definitely is way more into the details and the specifics. A lot of what you see on state reporting is buckets. You know, large, just kind of titles, not really digging into some of those details. So definitely receiving more data in these reports than you would from the state level.
And, and that's really for the community. If we've heard this before, it is worth repeating. And for the committee, as it goes forward, as part of its oversight, it's really about transparency, communication, good data. All that equals a, a better 360 accountability, external, internal, all different combinations of stakeholders. And what's really important, and this is drawn a lot from the work of Max Schachter and Safe Schools for Alex, look it up, 50 state dashboard. And they actually partnered with the Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance to further explain with the University of Florida, what the data means, because it could be exploited, misread, right, misrepresented. And it's really important to make sure that with the granularity, there's the ability for boards and administrations in the community to understand the information it gets. It's Max who always says at Parkland where he lost his son Alex in that tragedy. Parkland looked like one of the safest school districts in the country. It was all zeros year after year in the reports. He made it his goal and for Alex's legacy and those who lost their lives to make sure that that data, there's actually accountability to it. And in, in Florida, salaries can be docked. I believe directors can lose positions or, or at least people can lose their careers if they're not reporting information accurately. That type of oversight does not come from the state of Pennsylvania. So as a community, we're deciding to invest in having the best information out there. That's an area in the private sector where I work as subject matter expert in higher education. Look up the Cleary Act and Gene Cleary's legacy, C L E R Y. And oftentimes it's well established that those communities with higher levels of reports on incidents are safer in terms of a culture of safety and a climate, because people feel comfortable to report and that there'll be a responsiveness. We don't want to politicize and exploit that information ever, which is why this Safe Schools Committee is, uh, really, and, and this administration and all of our staff do such a great job in trying to adhere to those standards and just put out the best data so that we can have honest conversations about how to adjust and what we can do better and champion what works. So it's a bit of a soapbox, but it's very important. There's no district I know of reporting quarterly. And this emanates from our, our board policy to ensure that the superintendent or designee reports on these incidents. And there's a dashboard that's available at any time for the community to look at this information. So that it helps you ask more questions of this committee and of this administration from the district level to the school level. And now with location tracking, I doubt we'll have this public, but we're able to drill down even at, at certain areas and buildings and find out fact patterns. So thank you very much. Look forward to the opportunity. We do get internally behavioral threat assessment, I mean Title IX reports. It's not yet a dashboard, but I think that's really good practice. It's starting to be developed so that the board can see trend lines, even if that's an executive session. And also for behavioral threat assessment management, just to understand the efficacy and the frequency of trainings and, and to understand some of those trends. Which is where I can attest to the community, we'll have occasional sessions, executive sessions prior to safe schools when there are serious issues that are starting to, to be identified. So at least the board is aware in this committee, though certainly not getting in the weeds or micromanaging. So I hope all that makes sense for those who really care to pay attention and be part of this conversation and to add to it. Do we have any further comments or questions from students or insights from anyone else?
None from me.
Well, thank you. Enough has been a set, has been said today. We can move on to the next topic, please.
All right. I'm going to start off here and then Dr. Waters is gonna, gonna finish, but we're going to talk a little bit about therapy dogs in the North Penn School District. The therapy dogs policy was adopted in August of 2022. And then a administrative regulation was also developed that aligned with that policy. Within the policy and the administrative regulations, there's guidelines and expectations for the use of therapy dogs and the handler as well, which is really important. There's also in the, in the policy in AR, it talks about the required documentation, the training, the certification, vaccinations, all the required documents that are needed as part of that process. There's also, it talks about the responsibilities of a handler, which is really important when we look at different staff members who could go through the process of having a therapy dog. One of those responsibilities is actually as a handler, holding the leash of the dog at all times. So that does limit again, certain staff members who would have the ability to bring a therapy dog into school on a regular basis. It also goes through the approval process and also the procedures for building administrators and what their responsibilities would be as part of the therapy dog implementation. It does talk about guidelines for non-employees as well. Most of the policy is written for employees who want to bring in or go through the process of having a therapy dog. But there is also part of the process guidelines for non-employees requesting a therapy dog as well. So again, that was developed in 2022. And we've had consistent use and Dr. Waters is going to talk a little bit more about some of the different staff members that have utilized this therapy dog policy.
All right. Hi, everybody. Thank you, Dr. McKenna. So yeah, the therapy dogs have really made a lot of people smile, especially our students, which is most important. Right now, the most popular therapy dog I would say is Mario, and that's because Trish Pike, who is one of our counselors, she's also a member of the TIRP team. There's also a counselor, Tracy Schaefer over at North Wales, and she's also on that TIRP team. But they both, their dogs, I would say probably get around the district the most. The dogs are utilized for the most part for social emotional learning. So for example, if students are just having a hard day, maybe something happened in their personal life and they just need, you know, someone to talk to or just someone to kind of comfort them or soothe them in the moment. The, the therapy dogs have really been useful in that regard. In addition, I mentioned the TIRP team, which is when we have an emergency response to some trauma in our schools. Those therapy dogs have been able to go to other schools in the district. So one example that I'll share, we had a stu, or staff member pass away unfortunately a couple of years ago. And so that staff member had been beloved in the community, of course, in the school community. And so the, the students and staff were having a hard time naturally. And so the therapy dogs were there. It really did provide that sense of comfort and calm for the students and just knowing that they had a place to go, a dog to pet. You know, if that's what they needed was, was very helpful. And so the TIRP team, in addition to counselors who have the therapy dogs at their buildings, utilize them, like I said, just depending on what's needed. Sometimes it's just to pop into a classroom. It could be lessons, learning about animals, a variety of topics. One of the things that Dr. McKenna mentioned is that because part of our policy does speak to outside or people who are not necessarily North Penn staff, we are looking to expand this. And most likely we would be doing that by contracting with an agency. The reason is because, like Mike mentioned, if you are a handler, it's really difficult to kind of do your own job while managing your dog. The dogs still need to go out. You know, they, some of the dogs need a break. They need a rest. They get tired. There's days where some of the handlers will keep their dog at home, just because maybe they did a lot the day before. And, you know, they like a nap too, just like some of us. So, um, you know, so anyway, we're looking at contracting with an agency because that way we could make sure that we spread the love. But again, we try to make sure the dogs get to other schools if they can. And again, it's something that I think has really been beneficial.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Waters. And you know, every time my, my daughters get exposed to, to the therapy dogs. Oh, they are so excited, especially my younger one, which is 15, but she mentions it all the time. She loves them. They, they make her feel. And that's sort of priceless, isn't it? Really? Yeah, it is sort of, it's priceless. You know, they go through so much. Now our students do and giving that, them that little bit of additional support, it's, it's so important. Dr. Bauer, I just did JK's job there, but Dr. Bauer?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm going to be the, the Debbie Downer here to a degree. First of all, I asked my two dogs in my household to give a guest appearance tonight, which they happily obliged and they barked while I was talking. So I, I, let me be clear, I've had dogs my whole life and I love, I love dogs. But I will say that there's a lot of people of our roughly 2,000 employees are like, I want to bring my dog to work. And that's not what this is, right? A therapy dog is a service. It's not a service animal, I want to be clear, but having therapy dogs present is a service to support students and to help lower stress levels, improve mental health. But most of our employees are being paid to do something else. Teach math or teach PE or be a tech assistant, whatever it is, work in the cafeteria. So I think we've seen that we have a lot of employees who would like to bring their dog to work and have the dog, like Dr. McKenna said, sit in the back of the room on a dog bed. That's not what the- and have the dog, like Dr. McKenna said, sit in the back of the room on a dog bed. That's not what this should be. That's why Dr. Waters is saying, you know, we think it might be best to move more toward, not to say there won't be exceptions, right? So Ms. Pike, she's a member of our traumatic event response team. She's a counselor, like a counselor and a dog, that makes perfect sense. But maybe a chemistry teacher and a dog does not. So we're going to make connections with some services, have more regular cadence of, you know, the service stopping by on Tuesdays at that school where you have dog handlers come in and it's not teachers or staff members bringing their dog. So I hate to be the bearer of bad news. I know everybody loves the dogs and I do too, but.
I think it's really helpful and it's a testament to the risk management that had to occur. This was not an easy lift for the administration and somewhere Mr. Scrocky is probably smiling or wondering why his ears are burning. And the board really wanted to see this initiative. And we appreciate that there was an ability to compromise based on the facts at hand. And I don't know if pilot is the word, but to start out right in a way that we knew would reduce as many risks as possible. With that foundation, and I think it's a through line to the comments. You know, there's those of us who've visited and have had time with the dogs, I want to hear from the students that they have. And one of these is, one of the buildings and the administration's aware, we do have a teacher. I don't know where else we have maybe some other teachers. But the ability, because right, the number one context is education. That's the primary core responsibility. But is there the ability, which, you know, I've seen some studies and information brought to us, and this is also with Ms. McMertry and Ms. Stoll, who've also visited and asked some of these questions. Is there an opportunity for the administration with the knowledge base it has now to understand where, if there is a teacher and a certified dog that provides this service, an opportunity where we can expand the service? Because in the buildings, it's amazing what we hear. And yet it can be a burden and it's a bit of a logistical nightmare, you know, tying down our educators, you know, with some of these regulations, which are necessary. But if there's a number of years and a track record and an ability, can we look elsewhere at models that have been successful? Maybe try to change our rules some and pilot that, not change everything, but to have a pilot. That's something I feel comfortable, confident asking for the board to get an update on after my time here.
Thank you, Dr.
Can we get a commitment? That's I would just like to hear, not an answer. Kim, what's the exploration of what that pilot can be? So that the Safe Schools Committee in the future and our student representatives can hear if there's any variance or ability to expand this program when teachers have an opportunity.
I don't think that's an unreasonable request, Mr. Casa. And I will personally send you an invite to let you know, hey, we're talking about this at this meeting. So, yeah, we can certainly revisit.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
I needed to let him do that.
I just wanted to touch bases with the therapy dogs real quick. I absolutely love the therapy dogs. I think they are adorable and they bring joy to everyone around them. But I will also say the thing about the staff issue is kind of a huge thing. In my, I've been in North Penn High School since ninth grade because I took classes in ninth grade at North Penn. And I feel like in my four years, I've seen like the therapy dogs, not even like five times. I think I can count on one hand how many times I've seen the therapy dogs. It's very hard to catch them. Normally, even if you do see them, it's like the hallway or the concourse or somewhere like where it's very busy. There's a lot of people coming in and out. It's very hard to, I think also students don't really know where to find the therapy dogs because yes, it is a resource for everybody, but not everybody knows where to find this resource. So I think having number one, an outside source would be amazing because it wouldn't be tied down to a staff member in a certain part of the building as opposed to somewhere else. I also have previously worked in St. Luke's Upper Bucks, which is a hospital, which is very different from a school, but they also have therapy dogs for obviously medical reasons. But the way they did it was they also went from an outside source and this therapy dog had rounds to do. So there was a specific schedule where if you looked it up on their website, you can follow the schedule, see where the therapy dog is, whether it's in their office or on the specific floor or in the specific hallway, you know where they are and where to find them as opposed to just having them in a busy hallway in the middle of the school day where like like the therapy dog could be there, could not. I feel like it would add a lot more structure, first of all, and also students would get more access to it.
I'd love to see like students create an application on the North Penn desktop. Like, let's just pretend. Let's say a therapy dog is named Casa, you know, like where's Casa? And you can click on the application and they're, oh, he's a nepon. That's very, very cool. I like that you could figure out where they are. And Grace, I totally agree, like a regular cadence, knowing where the dog's going to be on which days I think would be helpful for people leveraging the resource. So thanks for that feedback. That's great.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Not for me.
Okay. With that, let me make sure we get to the, back to the agenda. That's it for informational items. Thank you, everyone, for the thorough explanation and helping to raise awareness and educate us on these important topics. Other business, do we have any additional items? I think Mr. Rome might.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Casa. Just of note, you will see on the FNO agenda, an agenda item changing over our visitor, I'm sorry, video management, different VMS. It's another acronym for either Dr. Bauer and our door access control to, from our current product to Genetek, which is on the FNO agenda. So you will see that in your next meeting.
Thank you.
I just, Mr. Casa, I do have to throw out there, this being your last Safe Schools Committee meeting. We certainly said our fair share of kudos at the action meeting last week. But you have served this committee with, leadership doesn't seem to sum it up. You've really challenged us to think how far we've come over the last eight years. And the way in which you've owned times where areas for growth, you have never claimed to be perfect. There are no guarantees when it comes to matters of safety, but how do we mitigate and minimize risk? How do we challenge the thinking? How do we create systems and structures that require continuous improvement? I just really want to thank you for all you've done for this committee, for us, for myself personally. It has been collaborative, collegial, and I've appreciated it. So when you, when you invest so much time and effort and energy into something, you, you want to walk away knowing that it's better than you had found it. And you have done that. So I just want to thank you for your leadership and all you've done for this group here. I'm sure I can speak on behalf of Dr. Nicholson, Dr. McKenna, Dr. Waters, and certainly Mr. Dur before Mr. Rome and Mr. Rome, but we've all really enjoyed learning with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Thank you, everyone. I don't want to belabor any of this. It just reminds me of my predecessor, I believe, in this chair on the committee, Mr. Frank O'Donnell. You know, there was a political debate back before he was first elected, and I remember saying to him that I have no doubt he has the same commitment and dedication to make sure that my children who were in school at the time and all students were absolutely safe. And I believe that to this day, that so does everyone else because it's where the common sense, right? Ms. Rudnick comes before the politics. And this is the one committee that absolutely should keep that at the forefront. Because that's where the independent, objective focus on data and what matters serves our students and our community and not just protecting our students. When done properly, transparently, there's no problem with also making sure that when we're proactive and we also protect taxpayers, this can all fit together, but needs this type of honesty and engagement at this level. So thank you, everyone, and school safety will never be perfect, ever. But it will always be a cycle of continuous improvement. So I thank you for being able to chair this, this committee. And more than anything, I want to thank Mr. Rome, his predecessor as well, Mr. Dur. But really the team that makes our schools safe, who embrace relationships. And no matter what anyone says in public, whether a comment or from this own board, you have served centered on students, making sure that everyone fears, feels that they are treated fairly, equally and with respect. And we see that difference when we hear from students. We hear that difference from families. And the fact that you're able to listen and adjust means that that excellence will continue to be a standard that you not only meet but exceed. And just want to thank you on behalf of this committee, the board and the community for the tireless dedicated service. Because you don't always hear what's working. And sometimes it's the quiet part that people don't want to say out loud. But this committee, hopefully, we have some honest conversations, can also applaud the champions who make this all work in our hallways and our classrooms. So thank you, Mr. Rome and your excellent team. With that, we'll move on to other business. Oh, not other business. We'll end other business. And we'll move on to public comment if Mr. Gelmer has any hands raised.
We do have one hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Gelmer. Now I gotta dig up my disclaimer. All right, here we go. Sorry, this isn't coming up as quickly as I prefer. All right. Individuals attending the meeting and intending to speak to the committee should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee raise their hand electronically and state their name and municipality. As a reminder, the public comment portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters being discussed at tonight's meeting or matters that may come before the Safe Schools Committee. It is not designed for debate or discussion with members of the committee. When appropriate, committee members may choose to respond to public comments that have been made or requests of a member of the administration. Follow up with the speakers after the meeting. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. This is in reference to Board Policy Number 903, revised in February 2022. All yours, Mr. Gelmer.
All righty, up first is Jason Lanier. Jason, I've enabled your microphone, so when you're ready to begin, please state your name and municipality for the record and begin your comments, please.
Jason Lanier Lansdale. I want to take some time here to, it seemed like there was sort of, Casa was trying to make comment about saying things at public comment that were somehow untrue. Let's, I just want to kind of square the information from the state versus what was said today. I don't know what the discrepancy is or if this just, the state information just needs to be metered down or if, I don't know, because it seems like you're saying incredibly different things. Regardless of how the granularity of the data, the violence in the, in the middle schools in particular is really, really high. And this is according to, and I'm going to read that, it says safeschools.pA.gov. And you can drill down, you can find our district, and then you can hit Pembroke, Penfield and Pendale individually. And you click on the radio button that says violence and it shows in Montgomery County. They do a county comparison and a state comparison. We are at 16.04 incidences per 100 students. I don't know why it's so much higher than what you guys reported, but what is it, you know, it's much higher than is reported at average in the county. So the county average is at 2.9, or excuse me, 1.9 per 100 incident, or 100 students. So why are we so high in violence at our middle schools? They have one exception, I guess, in 2025. The Hatfield is, or Penfield rather, is at 1.3 times as much violence as in the county average. But then if you look at the OSS, we're right at the county average for those violent incidences. So something doesn't make sense here. It seems like we're doing all this great granular data, but it doesn't seem like you're punishing kids for the incidences which are violent. And this is how they describe violent. So it says, please note, student code of conduct and academic code of conduct are not included in the incident per incident per 100 column in order to focus on the more serious infraction types and prevent skewing by the lesser data infractions. So this is, this is sort of the worst of the worst and it's really high. And how can we square this? What is going on? I mean, before we celebrate having granular data, maybe we need to figure out why the violence is so high in our middle schools. And I'll leave it there. I'd like to hear an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lanier.
Okay, our next person is Tina Gallagher. Tina, I have enabled your microphone, so when you're ready to begin, please state your name and municipality for the record and begin your comments, please.
Hi, Tina Gallagher, Tallmensen. I'd like to thank the committee first for all their efforts keeping students safe here at North Penn, especially those board members who will be leaving. I'm a retired special ed teacher and a parent of two North Penn grads. And I was a special ed teacher in the neighboring school district. I volunteer with a program called Be Smart in Montgomery County. It's a program that provides education and information to adults about secure storage of firearms. So it falls into that preventative layer of school safety. We have partnered with other districts here in Montgomery County and like we've sent some information to North Penn. The other districts in the county that we've partnered with have had incidences with guns in their schools. We have attended the Health and Wellness Fair here in North Penn for two years, two years now. And we are trying to see if there would be any more interest in our program. The letters SMART are an acronym for the S is for Secure Firearms. And then the other letters represent other parts of the program. What we have to offer is materials. We can do presentations. Any other supports that would be something specific for North Penn. Some school districts choose to post our link to our website, besmartforkids.org on the school webpages. Some give out materials and such at the beginning of the school year for like a back to school type packet for parent reminders for gun safety in their homes. We have different kind of materials, again, that can be found on the web pages. So just checking in to see if North Penn would be interested in any of this program going forward. And I really appreciate the opportunity. And again, thank you all for working so hard to keep kids safe.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Any other raised hands, Mr. Gelmer?
There are no more raised hands. That'll conclude public comment for tonight.
Thank you. The brief response first to Ms. Gallagher. I, we thank you for your outreach. I know the board is in possession of that information as well as board leaders, I mean administrative leadership. So I would expect someone from this committee and the administration from the cabinet to reach out to you with an update. Thank you for your efforts. They certainly are bipartisan and non-political. Aware of a county next to us where the Republican sheriff was really supported the network of victim assistance, not nonprofit. I've sat on the board for, for seven or eight years in making sure that gun locks and safes, that there was education to protect children in the home. So the public knows Pennsylvania is one of the states with no mandate, such as Colorado or Florida that actually has mandates for gun owners to have responsible control of the weapons in their homes. And lots of statistics people could look up that describe what those differences are in states with those types of laws and those without. It's not about gun control, but gun safety. So thank you for raising that issue. So thank you for raising that issue up and the work for the community and its children, Ms. Gallagher. As far as Mr. Lanier, I assume he's watched the beginning of this. And when we talked about some of the buckets and the information the state uses, which may actually inflate some of the numbers, but I think what's most important is always direct, Mr. Lanier, to Dr. Bauer. So, you know, as always, Dr. Bauer's very responsive in walking through all of these details. Dr. Bauer, is that a reasonable ask for you?
Just to follow up with Mr. Lanier, and I would actually offer a sit down with him. And I agree with him that it doesn't, something sounds like it's not lining up. So I'd welcome the opportunity, sit down with him, pull up our data, pull up what he's looking at, see if we can find discrepancies. And quite frankly, there have been discrepancies in state reports. Dr. Nicholson found something this year with a data point on the future ready dashboard that something was not like assimilating properly when we did our upload. So perhaps there's a mistake, but what I can assure you of is we are as accurate as possible. And we report everything. I will not speak for other districts. So Mr. Lanier, just shoot me an email or I can send you one if I don't hear from you. And we can sit down and let's dig into it together to make sure that what we're saying is accurate.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier, for always looking at these details, even if we don't agree. It's great when there could be some consensus, just looking through that and talking it through. To be clear, not a single incident of bullying, fights, any of the incidents that are reported by North Penn, it should be zero. Not one is acceptable. But schools ultimately in school safety is a reflection of society overall. And we're going to do what we can to make sure our schools remain safe and that there, that our students and staff have that perception and feeling of safety as well. It's been an honor to serve this board and I'll make sure that we also let the public know that the Facilities and Operations Committee will begin in the next few minutes. If you join that next link, remember the new practice is immediately following Safe Schools. Facilities and Operations will begin. There will be no, or there will be a meeting in January for Safe Schools. It's typically the last Monday of every month. However, until the reorganization happens on Monday, December 1st. And following that, that will reaffirm by board vote what the committee's structure and schedules will be. Stay tuned to the Safe Schools webpage and school board webpages as well for any announcements for the next time and date of the Safe Schools Committee. Thank you, everyone. It's been a true honor. And with that, it's during this meeting. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.